For December 20, 2022, for the Town of East Fishkill is now in order. Will everyone please rise and join me in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. A couple of quick announcements. There are two public hearings that we are going to adjourn at the request of the applicant. The public hearing for Michael Mil- excuse me, Smilkstein is being adjourned to January 17 meeting. And the public hearing for Estates at Phillips Farm is also being adjourned to the January 17 meeting at the request of the applicant. So if you are here for either one of those public hearings, we won't be holding those, but would welcome you back on January 17. The other announcement I want to make is that we are proud that Craig Arco, our fellow board member, has been elected to the town board. Sadly, he has to resign from the planning board, so tonight is the last board meeting for Craig Arco. And Craig, we'll miss you. Thank you very much for your service.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
Congratulations.
And congratulations. Good point. Thank you, Lori. The upcoming meeting dates are January 17, as I mentioned earlier, 2023, and February 21, 2023. We have the minutes for the November 10, 2023, meeting. Has everyone had a chance to review those? If so, I'll accept a motion to accept those minutes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, carries. We'll do a roll call. Craig, could you start? Craig Arco.
Lori G.
John Eichman.
Ed Mioshi.
Sarah Bledsoe.
We have a 2023 meeting schedule. The 2023 meetings will be on the third Tuesday of each month. I'll actually read through those if you'll give me a moment here. January 17, February 21, March 21, April 18, May 16, June 20, July 18, August 15, September 19, October 17, November 21, and December 19. And the meetings in 2023 will start at 6 o'clock, unlike the tradition of 7 o'clock in the past couple of years. So could I have a motion to approve that meeting schedule?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Excellent. So the first item on the agenda is the Donovan site plan. This is a simple extension of things if the applicant's not here. Applicant is here, excuse me. Pardon?
Yes, yes.
Please go ahead.
Thank you.
Yes.
My name is Oliver Engel. I am the managing member of Donovan 5 BMAC LLC. We have had before the board, or we have an approved site plan for number six Nancy Court. And the court has graciously renewed the site plan several times. First time was April 1 of 2014, I believe. What we are here before the board is to request an additional extension from six to nine months. The difference today is that in the past, we considered the business conditions not favorable to actually building the building. We have now decided that it would be a good idea for our purposes in order to, we're a manufacturing company, to build the building and make use of it. And so what we need to do at this particular point is to bring the plans up to date with our architect. There have been changes in various code requirements, particularly related to energy conservation. We need to bring the plans up to date in order to file for a building permit. And we also want to ask Michael Gillespie, who's the original person who worked on the site plan, to make sure that it's completely up to date in order to move forward with this project. So we request the extension.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments from board members? Any questions or comments from the town staff?
I believe the applicant asked for a nine-month extension. I think, based on my reading of the New York Town Law, a six-month extension would be more appropriate for the board to consider.
Got it.
The only thing that I wanted to, I thought in the past, because they've been here numerous times, was that to make sure that the site complies with any current-
Any new changes. So there is-
Site plan standards.
I know I spoke with you before and I said there wasn't, but we did rezone it from I to B3. So there's, it's now a B3, which really, the uses probably won't change significantly, but, and I don't think there's really been any changes to the goal, right? But he should look through the new zoning and just make sure that there's nothing that changed pertaining to his site. So there's a new zoning for that corridor, and you should just make sure that nothing will affect your particular project. And I'll take a look at it as well.
We could just adjourn it until next month and do it, just to do a review to see if there's anything that, and maybe he can submit what he's proposing.
Yeah, do you, are you, do you have actual proposal now?
At this moment?
Yeah, are you considering a particular?
That's what I'm hearing, right? You have a proposal now? Move forward?
Well, I'm not sure I understand your question, but we would like to move forward. In the past, it was just an extension-
You have an anticipated use, an intended use.
Oh, the anticipa- excuse me, the anticipated use is what we do as a manufacturing company. We occupy eight Nancy Court, and we also own six Nancy Court. So a company rents leases from Donovan at eight Nancy Court, and we would like to build six Nancy Court so that this company can expand into it.
So it's an existing use there now?
Yes, it is. Number eight Nancy Court is an approved zoning use, light manufacturing.
Okay, so we'll have to-
Yes.
I mean, maybe they're grandfathered, I don't know. I don't know if they're already doing it. So it's the same company, just expanding?
Yes. They put to other uses, but that's the goal.
So you're suggesting we should, we should ask the applicant to come back, let us know if anything has changed in terms of-
Unless maybe he wants to commit, and you know, if he's committing, that it's just an expansion of an ongoing use.
Well, it's, let me be clear-
But that site's not built yet, right? This site is-
No, this is a, this is a, this is a building that hasn't been built yet, obviously.
I understand. And on the site, on Nancy Court, you already have this entity doing light manufacturing.
Yes, on eight Nancy Court, that's right.
On an adjacent parcel.
And that entity, right, but that entity just wants to expand. It's not a new entity, it's not a new use, it's something that-
It would be the same general use, that's right.
Maybe we just need to formalize that, in my opinion.
You would like to know exactly what the proposed use is going to be?
Yeah. We just need to make sure that it's still in conform with the zoning.
Sure, we'll, we'll double check with you and other authorities to make sure that the zoning is still appropriate for what we'd like to use the building for.
Great, and you mentioned Michael Gillespie, and he could probably help you with that.
Yes, absolutely.
Okay.
Yep.
So, so we'll hold this over until the next meeting, and when you can report back, and I think we-
Sure. So just to be clear, you'd like me to, you'd like us to report on the use? And whether or not it's presently authorized under the latest zoning requirements?
It would be the use, and if there's any other, like if floodplain has changed-
Sure.
Or wetlands have changed, just to do a review to see if anything else environmentally has changed.
Okay.
Or if you're choosing to make any changes to the site plan. If you want to make changes to the site plan, we need to understand that, too.
Well, we want to make sure that it meets all the requirements. Those are the kinds of changes that we want to make sure that we're, you know, in it.
Yeah, your engineer should be able to run through and just check the boxes.
Yeah, right. He's done that, and Michael's done that in the past a couple of times, but I understand everything changes, so we're going to go back to him and ask him to do that.
Okay.
So do we still need to do the extension? Because it looks like their extension is expired last week.
Can we stay it? You can extend it for one month, and then next month you consider a longer extension?
Yeah, we'll, we'll just consider the extension next month, I think we'll be fine.
Okay. So that would be for January 20, if I understand?
January, I wanted to say 17.
17, my apologies.
Yes.
17.
Do we need, do we need a motion to do the short-term extension, or?
Sure, sure, a motion would be good.
So maybe we have that motion.
Sure, I'll make a motion to extend the Donovan site plan for, should we do 60 days because of potential weather?
That sounds fair.
Sure.
For 60 days.
Yeah. Second?
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, great. So you have an extension for 60 days, and we'll look forward to seeing you, and hopefully, weather permitting, on January 17.
Very good. Thank you very much for the board and app-
Thank you.
Happy holidays, thank you.
That might have been a jinx, I'm sorry.
So the second item on the agenda, Fire Rivers Bridges subdivision is deferred until January 17. Does that require an adjournment motion, or we're simply just moving it to next month, right?
You don't actually need a motion for that.
Okay. So the next item on the agenda is a public hearing for Speciale subdivision, pardon me if I've mispronounced that, is the applicant here?
Yes.
Bill Powell, I'm the engineer for the applicant, Sal Vitora Speciale. Mr. Speciale owns an 18-plus acre parcel, which is on the south side of Route 52, just east of where the Carpenter Road intersection comes out onto 52. The parcel itself, as you can see from the top of the drawing, it's more narrow and longer. Right now, there's an existing house with an existing horse barn and some outbuildings associated with the horse farm. There's a gravel driveway with a turnaround area right outside the existing house, and then there's a driveway to the barn. Mr. Speciale, right now, has the house in the front, and he has, he quite, he uses the barn quite a bit as far as going there and doing everything he needs to do to keep the farming going and taking care of the horses. So with this plan, it's in the R1 zone, one acre minimum, and we're proposing a two-lot subdivision, which would keep the existing house on a 1.5 approximate acre parcel in the front here, and then the rest of it would be a second lot, which would be for a second house that would just be to the east or the left side, if you're standing out on the road, of the barn. And at this point, he plans on keeping both the house in the front and the house in the back with the barn. And with this, we propose to widen the driveway slightly to meet the shared driveway requirements for access to both lots. And for the most part, except for the widening, all the existing accesses are planned to remain the same with the uneasement.
Can you just point out which house is existing, which, the barn, I assume, is in the fenced-in area?
So this is the existing house. This is the existing driveway, and there's a wide gravel area outside the house. And then there's a fence here for the horses, and then there's a gate where you go into this area. And this is the barn that's existing, and this is the proposed house he's looking to build for himself, so he's close to the horses.
He's looking to move into the new home and then-
Right.
Sell or whatever the other house is.
Probably rent out the house in front.
Any reason why you wouldn't have dedicated driveway?
He's really looking to preserve the nature of the lot. And it's an existing access, the farm, I mean, the barn has access directly off the gravel area, so he just didn't see the need to put in a whole separate driveway, you know, for this house. So he looks to use the shared driveway allowance, providing access to the second home. So ultimately, he's looking to keep everything pretty much the way it is now, but just build a second home, and then create the lot to make it legal.
And have we shown where, where a second driveway could be created in the event-
Yeah, I don't have it with me here, but we did provide a individual driveway plan, I believe.
Got it, got it. I'm sure professionals have seen that, probably, right?
So Christian Moore isn't here today, and he had, he did want me to just go over a couple of the comments on his behalf.
Excellent.
So I, I don't know, maybe you've addressed this as well, but he, his main issue, when I talked to him today, was about the base flood elevation, and he's saying there's two different base flood elevations in different locations on the site. Has that been addressed with him?
I did speak with him today, and I'm going to be able to accommodate what he's looking for. Because a lot of the floodplain is, was in the back, we just kind of overlaid the existing floodplain mapping over generic contours. So what we're going to do is get the datum established per the FEMA datum, and then that'll allow us to establish the base flood elevation, which would be consistent throughout the site.
And then the only other thing is that the shared driveway is a special permit, so I think we need to add that to the advertisement for, so we'll, we'll probably have to hold open the public hearing, because I don't believe you advertise for the shared driveway special permit in the notice, so you'll just have to do that, okay, so that we can just close that loop for the next meeting.
Okay.
And I just had a couple things to add. I don't have the planner front of me. Was that 1.48 acres, or is it actually 1.5, a small lot?
Um.
It seems to be 1.5.
It's 1.52.
1.52, so you're fine with that, guard. Okay, good. So Bill and I spoke a little earlier today, and just a couple of concerns that I had, in my opinion, anyway. There's a really nice tree line on both sides of the driveway, and there's Belgium block curving. So the Belgium block will have to get removed. The code speaks to 16-foot-wide driveway for shared, and now the two feet on either side for disclear access. So the concern I have, and I think maybe Bill just needs to take a little closer look how that may impact the tree line, you know, because it's a really nice tree line. So I know they're talking about trying to preserve the look, but if they ultimately kill the trees and have to cut the trees, well, you're stepping in the wrong direction. So that's one concern I think needs to be just looked at.
And I did take a look at that, and we're confident that we can build this shared driveway without impacting the trees.
Okay, but it will be within the drip line. You're going to be expanding within the drip line. So maybe like forestal needs to take a look, our conservation guy needs to take a look at that.
You know, and is it, and this is something, I'm assuming that they ask for the width because they want to be able to have two cars passing? Is that something that-
It's in the code, so I don't know, you know.
It's probably to allow like two in case, so I don't know, maybe there's, maybe you might, in order to avoid affecting the tree line, you might want to go for a variance and see if they grant you it, in that case, if it's that important to the site.
It's, it's very important to Mr. Speciale to keep the trees. He is, they're really, it's just a nice feature for the property.
Absolutely.
And he has no, and he has no interest in Bill doing something that would hurt, you know, harm them.
I just think maybe an arborist needs to take a look and just understand if there's going to be a potential impact. The other concern I had was the proximity of the shared driveway to the access of the garage of the first house. And, you know, maybe it takes a site visit, I don't know, to really appreciate, because the concern is if you back out of that garage, you're like backing into the driveway, and if you've got like a UPS truck or something backing up the driveway, it's a direct, potential direct conflict. So I just asked Bill if there was a way to maybe reconfigure that, because he does have that space in the cul-de-sac to get more separation from the garage. So go out there, you'll see what I'm talking about. You can't see it on the drawing. Well, it's hard, it doesn't jump at you until you go out there.
All right, and we're all for a site visit if it needs to be. You know, we can discuss this a little bit further now, here's some pictures.
We can.
Pass them down.
Thank you. So one thing that I should have called for a little bit earlier, could I have a motion to actually open the public hearing this evening?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
So with this, with the development of this subdivision, you know, we feel that any car backing out of that garage will have plenty of room to turn around. And we look at this as more of a situation like you have a small neighborhood with short driveways and people back into a road. I look at, I know it's in Wapengers, the Regency at Wapengers, there's 25-foot driveways and 240 homes, and the only way to get in and out of the driveway, you have to back out into the road. So I don't, you know, respectfully, I don't see that there's any issue with a car backing out of the driveway in front of the garage into the shared driveway portion. As you can see from the plan, there is a gate that's actually needed for the farm, so it's not like cars are going to be going fast, leaving the barn into this area. They do have to slow down to go through the gate. So I just, I just think this is something that's been ongoing. There is going to be a second home in the back, but we don't really see much more traffic than that's there now, since Mr. Speciale goes there a couple times a day, take care of the horses. But we're all for a site visits, visit, if the board sees that, that's, that would be helpful. But ultimately, this is just one house in the back with a barn, and again, I don't think a car backing out in that area would really have any impact, any different than any other neighborhood with short driveways. And I look at the muse across the street, it's got a long parking lot with all these parking spaces where people can drive fast, because it's a long straight parking lot, and people, well, I don't know how many cars are in there, are always backing out, so that's, that's, that's our position.
On the photo that you gave us, I see the barn, and then there's a shed all the way to the right.
Yep.
There's another structure in the middle that doesn't appear to be on that blueprint. If you look at the photo, it's a green roof structure. Is that on the property?
They're going to remove it. They know the building, yeah.
That looks like a building, like a long skinny building.
Yeah, that is the barn, I believe, that's on the plan. Let me just ask.
You might be looking at the wood that's hard. That's the one that's on the plan. That's on the plan, that's just the beams that are protecting it.
The neighbor?
Yes, the one to the right is the neighbor, the one on-
At the distance is what's shown on that blueprint?
Right. That was going to be the last thing that I was going to get into, because it's the last meeting. It's 12.3 feet to the property line, and it needs to be 15, and we talked about taking it down, but after really looking at it, he'd like to keep it, so that's something that he would like to go to the ZBA for variance, in order to keep it.
Okay.
Okay. Is there any, are you proposing any landscaping between the back of this house? I'm sorry, I can't see the plan. Well, it looks like you might have something.
There's a whole row of every green trees in here now, so that's why we weren't proposing anything.
Just these are here?
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, additional questions or comments by board members or town staff? If not, I will ask the public if anybody is here for this public hearing to speak for or against the project. You can come forward now. So if not, so I guess your notice provision needs to be amended, and we will adjourn the public hearing to the next meeting.
Do you definitely want to go for variance on this?
He prefers not to move the shed, so if we have to get a variance to keep it, then we would go in that direction.
And, and do you want to continue with the public hearing in January here or in February?
It would probably make-
Going to the ZBA, you probably have two meetings running.
Because this board can't do anything until we go to the ZBA, right?
Not if you're going to the ZBA.
Yeah, so then I would, yes, February would be better, because we wouldn't be able to do that in time.
That makes sense.
And you may also have to figure out if the driveway is going to, width is going to need to be modified, or if you're going to need a variance for that, if the trees aren't, if you don't want to remove the trees, and if there's going to be any damage to the trees, it has to kind of be looked at.
Okay.
You're going to be there anyway, so maybe-
Yeah, no, that's, that's a very good point.
So could I have a motion to refer the applicant to the ZBA?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Could I also have a motion then to adjourn this public hearing to our February 21 meeting? You don't think that's enough time? That's two meetings?
When's the ZBA? You can't make the January 21.
I would think it would be okay for the applicant to come back in February. I'm not, I'm not saying it necessarily would be closed in February, or every, you know, get a decision here in February, but at least they'll have time to work out other issues.
At least get through one meeting, no, we'll have an idea where we stand with the ZBA.
I think February here is a fair meeting.
Great. So a motion to adjourn the meeting to February 21, public hearing, rather, excuse me?
So moved.
All in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we'll see you in a couple of months.
You're going to re-advertise for your special permit for the shared driveway as well?
The 21st.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night.
Thank you. The next item on the agenda is Hopewell Market.
Sure. Is there a headlamp lit on the floor?
Sure.
Hi, everybody, Amy Vamadiri for the applicant.
Welcome.
Last time I was here, since I was here last, I revised the parking, and I added lighting, and I see that there's additional lighting needed. I wasn't sure what the existing was, so I just ran out there, and it's pretty dim. There is an arm that comes off of a pole in the front on the, where the exit would be, so, but even that isn't creating that much light, so I'll revise the lighting. I saw the fire advisory board comments, those are fine. I think they may have already done the alarm system, and I'm not sure if they reached out for the Knox box, but I know that comes from the fire department. The traffic count, I'm not sure what I did, but the numbers that are here are based on a 24/7 convenience mart, and so we're looking at 52 trips in the morning, during a peak morning. They're not going to have coffee, they're not going to have any food service, they can't, the health department has the limitation on that, so I think that that number is probably high for this use, for this particular market. So I know being based on a 24/7 market doesn't really impact it, but the fact that there's no coffee in the morning and there's no food, I think that that's going to reduce the trips from what's shown here.
So Amy, I have a question for you.
Okay.
The way we're reading this health department letter, it seems unclear to me, and maybe you've confirmed this with Tanya, there's a little confusion about the way it's written.
Make sure we look at the right letter.
Yeah, there's, there's like three different letters that we got from the health department, and the last one in October kind of modified a couple of the conditions, and the last condition is actually a resolution. The last one of the, said that the only, it said several times that the only other use on the property could be this two-bedroom apartment, which seemed to indicate to me that they were not happy with the house being used. And, and then they sort of modified that language a little bit, but it was still unclear.
The most recent letter, they did come out like within a day or like an hour of each other, I remember. It does discuss the house, and the three uses are fine based on the most recent letter.
Well, because it does mention the house, but the last line is still that final line which talks about it only having two uses on the site. So it's, it's sort of inconsistent, the letter, even the last one, in October, if that's the last one that you have, the October 6 one, and that's the last one we have.
The most recent letter, they did come out like within a day or like an hour of each other, I remember. It does discuss the house, and the three uses are fine, based on the most recent letter.
Well, because it does mention the house, but the last line is still that final line which talks about it only having two uses on the site. So it's, it's sort of inconsistent, the letter, even the last one, in October, if that's the last one that you have, the October 6th one, and that's the last one we have.
Well, there is discussion of, so the two uses are residential and commercial, maybe that's.
No, it says "any other uses other than the market under the conditions above and the two-bedroom apartment are not accepted by this office."
In the building for that septic system, because there's two septic systems, that's why. So the house is on its own system, and that's discussed in one of the letters. And then the building with the two apartments, or the two-bedroom apartment and the commercial is on another septic system.
Okay, so we'll just, we'll just need to confirm that, but, but that we basically made the approval subject to any of the conditions in the health department letter.
Okay. I think that was, was there?
So can you provide me with all those letters, just because it was?
Yeah, I will.
And they were like all dated, like right around the same time.
Yeah. I can do that.
So, I'm sorry, Michelle, is this a site plan approval or a change of use?
It's a change of use, but it's also a site plan, because they did modify the parking area.
Oh, okay.
And they modified the use in the, the building it used to be, I think it was a tattoo parlor going.
Most recently.
But minor amendment to the site plan with regard to the parking?
Lighting, parking, and like signage, like no parking.
Can you just talk to the signage a little bit?
Oh, I did see that. So we can put a, an enter here and a do not enter, because you're coming in, going counterclockwise through the site. So there is, I think I am showing a one-way on the site within the parking lot, but I will put one at the, one at the entrance.
And what about the sign for the market, where is that going to go?
Oh, I think he's going to maintain the, the hanging one and put one on the awning. That's actually on the plan.
Okay, so, so you're, and I did see the one on the, but you're not intending to put anything anywhere else on the site, because usually we approve this location of the site as part of the site plan, so I just want to make sure we're not putting a freestanding sign anywhere.
No, this is, we talked about this, so I think it's, because that tattoo sign is hanging still, so I think he's just going to utilize that hook.
And then can you describe the lighting that you're proposing for the site?
For the actual site itself, there's.
Parking as well.
Yeah, floodlighting on the back right corner, if you're looking at the house or the building from the road. And I, I don't remember if I'm.
Do we get footage of that trick, sir?
I have them, but I have to, I'm going to have to revise it. I don't have enough lighting in the back northwest corner.
When you say floodlighting, what do you mean by floodlighting? Are they?
They're on, yeah, they're like, yeah, wall pack, pole cut off. Yeah, no poles. And then I think, I'm not adding any at the house. And like I said, the front, where the exit will be, is, is well lit from the poles that are there on the adjacent parking lot, and hanging over the, where the exit will, will be.
I think there was a comment about the northeast corner of the pavement.
Northwest. It is dark back there. I'll, I'll add, I see that there's, you know, I have no, I need more lighting back there.
All right, so I'll update that. And then I guess there's a bollard and something else in the right of way that you're going to remove, is that right?
Yeah, in the front of the building, there's the fence, and I think there's like four or five bollards in, in there. And per Cassandra Bibbo's letter, we have to remove everything.
So you'll make a note on the plan?
Yep. I, I'm showing it as existing, to be removed.
To be removed, okay. And then there was a comment about the fire truck encroaching onto the grass snow storage area?
Yeah.
And we're looking for FAB to comment on that. I don't know if you've had any dialogue with them?
I saw the FAB letter, it didn't have anything on the encroachment. I mean, I can probably readjust that, but it is, there's no curb there, and it is just snow storage, so, and it's just the fire truck, that's the only truck that's going over.
Because typically, you know, if it's tight for movement, it would be a paved striped area, so it couldn't be ever occupied by something. So being that it's grass, I just think they should say it's either okay or not okay.
Let me see if I can adjust it.
They may not be aware of the encroachment.
Okay.
They're aware of the Knox box and all that other stuff, but they may not be aware of this encroachment.
Okay.
Other questions by board members, comments?
Will you have seating in the front?
No.
So no seating?
Correct.
Because the bollards would be required if you had seating on there.
Exactly, and the bollards need to go, so the seating, no seating.
Okay.
So we have to add a condition to the resolution, which is just, when you read it, we're going to add a second condition, which means that we're going to have them, her satisfactorily address the comments in the 121622 CPL letter, but I'll repeat that when you get there.
And what, will we amend the comments in here about the two-bedroom residents or two-bedroom apartment?
I guess we have to, we have to figure out, I didn't make a comment one way or the other about it, because I couldn't tell what, what the letter was saying, basically, that I was reading. So I just kind of essentially referenced the Department of Health letter, and said that they had to satisfactorily address the comments that were listed in the health department.
Okay, excellent.
And I listed those.
But it sounded like Amy said there were two letters, one for the residence and one.
Yeah, so we need to, we need to reference, I guess maybe we need to reference another letter.
Do you know the date of the letter?
I kind of think the most recent one addressed everything completely. There may be three letters, I, I don't know the date.
It's probably a later date than October 6th.
It, yeah, but it could have been like October 7th, it could have been.
Hmm.
Yeah, so Michelle, I just think six and eight are a little bit in conflict.
How about if we make, the latest date is determined in working with the town planner or something, and Amy can work with you on that? Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Any other questions or comments? I think we do have a resolution to go through, and, and includes a lot of conditions, so I'll get started. Name of site plan, Hopewell Market, name of applicant, Charlie's Real Estate/Maha Fakuri. Location, 844-846 Route 376. Whereas the applicant is applying for a site plan amendment for a change of use to convert an existing commercial building formerly used as a tattoo parlor to a food market. And whereas the site also contains an existing two-bedroom apartment located above the ground floor commercial space and a single-family home. And whereas the existing residential uses in the proposed market must be approved by the Dutchess County Health Department. Whereas no food preparation is permitted within the food market premises without returning to the planning board for amended site plan approval and receiving DCHD review and approval. Whereas, per the letter from Tanya Clark at the Dutchess County Health Department dated 9/8/22.
So there were two letters that I saw, for sure.
9/8/22 and October 4th, the market is limited to a maximum of two employees. Whereas the applicant has provided four additional parking spaces for a total of 10 spaces on the site to meet the town's parking requirements. Whereas the applicant has removed all seating fencing and other structures within the New York State DOT right of way at the front of the building.
Have they been removed yet? I thought they were removed.
Whereas the applicant will remove?
I think will remove, I was just there and I have no idea.
Okay, so maybe that goes down to a condition?
Okay.
Of all?
I don't think they did anything, because I think they were waiting to do, to get the approval before they did anything on site, so I'm pretty sure they're still there.
Okay, we'll come back to that with the, with the condition. Whereas the proposed project is a type 2 action under SEAKER and no further environmental review is required. And now therefore be resolved, the planning board hereby approves the amended site plan for 844-846 Route 376, is represented on a map entitled 844-846 Route 376, Hopewell Market, prepared by Dan Stokosa Engineering, dated September 30th, 2021, and last revised November 23rd, 2022, with the following conditions. One, the approval is conditioned on the site meeting all Dutchess County Health Department requirements listed in the October 6th, 2022 letter, including but not limited to sanitary and water capacities for all structures on site. The pump station must be fully operational, maximum of two employees are at the facility, no preparation or deli is provided by the establishment, no hot coffee or tea sales are provided by the establishment, and there is no cooking on site. The only other use on the property is a two-bedroom apartment in the same building as the market, and the Department of Agriculture and Markets is contacted for any permitted permitting needed. And the only other use on the site is a two-bedroom residence. And, number two.
And two would be satisfactorily, satisfactorily address the comments in the CPL letter dated 121622.
Thank you. And?
And you got the HVA letter, too?
Yeah, and the HVA letter.
Dated December 16th.
December 16th, 2022. Both letters, HVA and CPL letters.
And is number three then, the removal of all seating fencing and other structures within the right of way?
Yes.
And is there, is there further requirement for you to approve the final lighting plan?
Yes.
Okay, so number four, as approved by the town planner? And are there any other conditions?
Michelle, I think subcondition six under number one should say, instead of on the property, in the building, or in the commercial building, those are exactly taken from, that that's why it was confusing, there, those are exactly the conditions in the letter. So I, and I did that on purpose, because I wasn't sure what they meant. So I think we, I have a call into her to try to clarify it, but she.
Is there a chance we may have to amend this resolution at a following meeting?
I was going to say, are we actually ready to approve this, or should this get pushed off?
What was, what was condition six? I'm sorry, that's the health department.
So condition six is that the only other use on the property is a two-bedroom apartment in the same building, and then condition eight is that the only other use on site is a two-bedroom residence, so it's a little bit in conflict.
So that came from two different letters?
Well, yeah, except for the last line of this same letter that has the two conflicting things, says "any other uses other than the market under the conditions above and the two-bedroom apartment are not accepted by this office." So it's, yeah, not easy to.
Ambiguous.
Yeah.
Yeah, that doesn't sound like we're ready.
Well, it's, she's aware of all three conditions. There are letters out there that address the house septic system and that address the commercial building septic system.
But if it's a condition, either they meet it or they don't, right?
Yeah, so I tried to, you know, we started to capture that at the beginning.
But the two are in conflict, you could never meet both of them.
We could even, I mean, we could.
Maybe it's just, you know, a typo that benefited it out.
Right.
And either they meet, meet the condition, or the.
Right, I agree.
Site plan doesn't get signed.
Exactly, I mean, we could just leave it as, you know, I guess as broad as full approval.
Satisfactory health department approval?
Exactly, we can leave it as broad as that.
I'd rather do that if that's.
Yes.
I think that would make more sense. So, so are we suggesting we're going to make this subject to satisfactory approval by the health department and not list all of the conditions?
Yes.
Okay.
From I through.
You're comfortable with that, because it's not our purview then? Is that, that's what we're saying, right? It's not our.
It's not our purview, well, I mean, it's our purview, it's our purview to know, but it's not our purview to approve it anyway.
Okay.
Okay, so we'll, we'll amend the resolution to?
Wait, I have, hang on, I'm sorry. So the October 4th letter is just addressing the commercial building and the two-bedroom apartment. And then there's a more recent letter, right?
We have something.
It seems so odd that we got a letter for the house and a letter for the building that are all in the same property.
Because.
It'd be like one letter stating, this is what happens on that parcel, not.
Well, I think there is a more recent.
Is there an October 4th or an October 6th letter? Because our whereas says October 4, and our condition says October 6.
Well, because there are three letters.
There may only be two.
Couldn't make it more confusing if you tried, right?
There's an, there is a September 8th, an October 4th, and apparently an October 6th.
I don't.
Yeah, so we'll, we'll, we need to.
We'll get to it about.
So I'll, I'll tell you what happened, that she initially went, Tanya initially went out and, or, they initially were looking for a sign-off on just the commercial building with the two-bedroom apartment. And then Tanya, looking it up, realized there was a house there. So there was a time difference between them investigating one septic system and then having to investigate the other. So that's why that's broken down like that.
So if we remove the reference to letters in condition one and just say, subject to satisfactory health department approval of the site plan?
That's fine with me, I think it's all encompassing.
Okay.
And then Tanya maybe can just do an email, that, you know, you need to.
I'll email Tanya and Michelle.
Sign the two letters, that those two letters represent everything on this parcel or something like that.
Okay.
She doesn't want to do a new letter.
Okay, so we've amended condition one, we've added two, three, and four. Are there any other conditions or amendments that we need to consider?
Well, okay, let me just ask this to Michael. If we amend that and just say satisfactory approval from the Dutchess County Health Department, they also have very specific conditions about only having two employees on the site, do we need to reference that, or do we just leave it at the other, the fact that they can't have the sales and all that?
No, I think every condition that the Dutchess County Department of Health places on is encompassed by that provision, that's how I look at it.
We don't have a parking limitation here, though, to make the planning board want to limit employees, right? You said there were 10 parking spots?
There's, so they meet requirements now?
Okay.
Okay, so the resolution was offered by Chairman John Eichmann, could I have a second?
Second.
Okay, we'll do a roll call vote. Board member Lori G.
Aye.
Board member Ed Miyoshi.
Aye.
Board member Sarah Bloodso.
Hi.
Board member Craig Arco.
Aye.
And Chairman John Eichmann, I'm an aye, passes.
Thank you.
Have your holiday.
Thank you, too. So, the last item on the agenda is microgrid network.
Good evening, everyone.
Good evening.
Pleasant surprise, the agenda, I printed out had two more items, so it doesn't happen too much for me. My name is John Capello, I'm an attorney with Jacobitz and Gubitz on the other side of the river in Walden, New York. And I'm here tonight with Rebecca Barr, the VP of Energy, and Tumo Sugito, the energy facilities architect for Microgrid Networks. Microgrid Networks does energy storage systems, and they have successfully installed systems in California and Texas, and they currently have 11 projects either under construction or about to be approved in the metro New York City area. And they were recently awarded by Central Hudson the opportunity to do a 50-megawatt facility here in East Fishkill. Now, what we're here tonight is to present the application to the board. This comes under, it's going to need a special permit for the town board under your economic development section. 194-467, which is an economic redevelopment special permit for the town board. So what we're here tonight is to have Rebecca and Tumo present the application, and then just kind of generally discuss process. I believe your boards have gone through a couple of these before, so I just want to make sure we don't get caught in the Alphonse Gaston that we coordinate between what the town board needs to do and what your board will need to do, so we could get you all the information you need in the most efficient manner to make your determination. So with that, I'm going to turn it over to Rebecca, and she will introduce the project.
Thank you, John. Thank you, everyone, good evening. We are here tonight to talk about a proposed energy storage facility in the industrial business park, I Park 84. As John mentioned, we are an energy developer, we're based in New York City, we have currently a few projects in the city that are under construction, 10-megawatt, 40-megawatt-hour energy storage system. And with our affiliate company, Perfect Power, we have over 500 megawatt of solar and energy storage in development. Quick, I guess, for those who are not familiar with energy storage, we're basically talking about large batteries that are grid-facing, we're connecting to the local electrical grid, and we are charging the system when the demand is low for energy and discharging, releasing back energy into the grid when it's needed. And energy storage is something that is being pushed by the state, there are new mandates and goals by, established by the governor. And the goal is to increase grid stability, resiliency, and flexibility, like I mentioned, responding to higher demand on the system. On the screen, you are seeing kind of a generic look of an energy battery system. You have the, sorry, this is the, on the right side, you see a container, this is a non-walkable space, it's basically packed, if you opened a door, you will see a rack of batteries inside. inside, and you have also battery management system inside and cooling HVAC system. On the left side, you have the power conversion system, the inverter. So why is energy storage important? We talked a little bit about grid stability and demand. This is something that is also allowing additional renewable energy to penetrate the local grid, so we have existing infrastructure, and even though we have a lot of renewable energy coming from upstate, energy storage is something that really allows that energy to come into our communities and be stored locally for when it's required. And it also allows for a reduction in expensive upgrades, which is translated into cost-saving to the ratepayer. Just a little bit to touch on the New York mandate. Currently, we're looking at 6,000-megawatt of energy storage that is required to be installed by 2030. This is double than the previous target of 3,000 megawatts, and currently, we're looking at less than 10% achieved. So we have obviously only about seven years left to achieve the goal, and we're not getting close to achieving the mandate. Specifically, the project that we are working on is a procurement award that we have won with Central Hudson. So Central Hudson is responding to PSC Order 18-E-0130. They are required to procure energy storage aimed at combating climate change and meeting the state energy efficiency goals. Phase one of the project is going to be a 50-megawatt four-hour system, which translates to 200-megawatt-hour energy storage facility. The facility is a ground-mounted installation. We're proposing energy, battery energy enclosures that are going to be installed on concrete pads with the associated number of inverters and balance of plant that includes the interconnection lines to the Shenandoah Substation and the switchyard. Just to orient everybody on the location, in yellow, you can see on the screen the tax lot that we're talking about, and in green, you can see the lease area for the proposed energy storage facility. Just to the north of it, we can see the new proposed warehouse by PepsiCo, which I understand was under review recently by the board, and to the southwest, we can see the Shenandoah Substation. This is the existing condition on the site. Right now, we're looking at an area that was originally developed as a parking lot for I Park, and if you're looking at the proposed layout, this is, this is it. We have two rows of battery enclosures, and the center aisle is where the inverters are located, and to the south of it, you can see the switchyard area and the switchgear building. And if we are zooming out a little bit, we can see kind of a 3D model of the site. We proposed the area to be fenced to minimize the visual disturbance of the proposed facility. So we'll have some rendering that you can look at very shortly. So this is looking from northwest. You can see the lines coming in from the Shenandoah Station, crossing West Drive into the facility. And this is a little bit more zoomed out. You can see the proposed interconnection into the substation to the southwest. These are a few sections, elevations. The top one is east to west. You can see the two rows of battery enclosures. In the middle, you can see the inverters that are controlling each group of enclosures. And then we have a section north to south showing the connection to the switchyard. This is a rendering. Basically, if you're looking from West Drive, it's maybe, you'll have to like look very closely, but you can see that there is a fence proposed in the bottom location. I don't know if you can see my cursor, but it's highlighting a fence here. Additional view from the north, again, from West Drive, you can see the proposed fenced area right here. And if we're looking a little bit more close up, this is looking from the northwest corner of the site into the facility. I'll open it for questions. I know we had some preliminary discussion. We wanted to add these renderings to give you a little bit of a sense of how the facility is gonna look like. Happy to take questions.
So you won't see anything except the fence? This is shorter than the fence?
So the majority of the facility are the enclosures. On average, they are about eight to nine feet tall, and the fence will match the top of the enclosure height.
These prefab?
Essentially, I think, to give you just some perspective, it's almost like if you parked a tractor-trailer body at the size of one of the, yeah, this particular sub-
If you don't mind, come to the microphone. Thank you.
And I just, I'm not as familiar with some of the measurement of energy. So when you say this is a 50-megawatt four-hour storage, what does that mean? What, how, what does that mean? Does that mean if Central Hudson went down for some reason, you can support it for four hours, or is that not their whole capacity?
So it's not necessarily to support when the grid completely fails. It's mostly to prevent the grid from failing, and they are required by the state to procure a certain quantity, which the minimum is 10-megawatt. That's the minimum that they were required to procure from developers. So it's mostly to make the grid more resilient and shave the peak demand when it occurs.
What's the four hours?
But the, but the storage itself is coming from the same sources that power comes from today. It's, this isn't gonna be a solar facility or anything like that to actually generate energy that's being stored?
Right. It's not generating energy. We are considering adding solar, but it's not, it's never going to get to the same capacity that the storage is built for.
Okay.
But it's, it's getting the energy from the grid when the demand is low during the night, and then the four hours is the injection time back into the grid. So it's injecting back into the grid over for a duration of four hours.
Oh, that's the maximum that it can produce energy? Maximum time period?
The injection max time per cycle, per day is four hours.
Okay, got it.
Are these prefab units that'll be trucked in, set on concrete slab?
Yes, so they are prefab, and then the site work includes the foundation for the enclosures and all the underground conduits that connect the inverters to the enclosures and back into the switchyard.
What's the fire suppression for something like this?
There are various options for fire suppression. Some enclosures come with the prefabricated piping for scrapers. That's one option. It really depends on the preference of the local fire department and the permitting that is the process that you have. In New York City specifically, the fire department is requesting that all fire suppression is gonna be external to the enclosures. That's their preference for NFPA-15 systems. We are currently, we have a draft of an NFPA-855 to cover all the safety procedures around the installation, which is something that we will provide to you.
So, so water?
They'll do deluge. It'll be dry until they need it.
I would've thought it would be like halogen or something.
It depends. If it's, if it's an enclosure, they could use water mist, which is new systems that are upcoming. There's a lot of power here, so you gotta be careful with water.
Yeah, that's what I was surprised.
The water is mostly to cool the enclosure in case there is an issue inside the enclosure. The safety systems, the mechanisms that you have inside are mostly to prevent an issue from occurring. If you have a short circuit or any type of overheating voltage situation, the systems are monitored 24/7, and they are capable of detecting issues and shutting off units that have any type of irregularization, irregular voltage or any type of issue. So most of the safety around the enclosures is prevention, and then the water suppression system is to cool down the enclosure in case there is a larger issue, right?
More of a containment to keep the fire in one enclosure. Most transformers have deluge systems around the transformer that goes off and douses into the water. You've mentioned some troughs, some wiring troughs underground. Will you be using linear detection in the troughs to detect fire in there, or are you just, just run the wire?
The conduits underground are just for the high-voltage conduits that are on site, and then any type of medium-low voltage can be run above ground. There is no fire detection in underground. It's just the like four-inch, five-inch conduits for high-voltage ones.
It's not like a concrete trough?
No.
If somebody accidentally gained access to the fenced-in area, is there a danger to human life?
Yeah, so you can think about it as, it's similar to a substation in the sense that it does require fencing and a security system, and that's part of our plan. You need to have a dedicated monitored security system.
Got it.
But the engineering of an energy facility includes a grounding study and installation, so you can safely walk on the site. It's designed to handle the voltages that we are installing. But there is concern, like any type of other, you know, facility, substation, we don't wanna have anybody come in, like we heard stories about, like what happened in North Carolina recently where people are vandalizing substations. So obviously, you have to have a security system and fencing.
Got it. Can you describe what the switchyard equipment looks like?
Yeah. So the switchyard building is here in the back. I think we have the measurements mentioned on the application. So that building is slightly higher than the enclosures. I believe it was 16 feet to 14 feet.
Yeah, whole interior, yeah.
And then you have the lines that are coming in to the switchyard. So that is an area where it's going to be visible beyond the fence, but if you're looking from the, again, from the road, we do have a nice line of trees on West Drive that are, I think, shielding. If you're looking here from the southwest-
Miss, can you speak off to the microphone?
Oh, sorry. So if you're looking from southwest, you can see there is a nice line of trees, large trees, that are right on West Drive, right here. So in addition to the fence line, you have also, I think, six or seven large trees on West Drive.
The batteries, what's the average life of those batteries, and what's the disposal or recycling of those?
So a facility, normally, you think about it as a 20-year lifespan, but we have in place also plans for augmentation and replacing batteries every few years. Batteries tend to degrade. The first two years, they can go down by as much as 10%. So usually, there is a plan for replacing modules that need to be replaced. So that's part of the, part of the plan, but the general answer would be 20 years. And in terms of recycling, that's something that is part of the agreement that we have with the supplier, that's, they have their plan, and that's, that's, sorry, that's the agreement that we have with them. When we need to replace, even if it's a single battery or module or rack, that's their responsibility.
Okay. And is there, I guess going back to fire or anything like that, is there any hazard of the materials of the battery being hazardous or gases or anything like that?
There are no emissions from the facility. Obviously, there is a risk with batteries. These are LFP batteries, and they're considered, you know, safer than what we think about with like regular, you know, scooters or whatever, like, and they're being monitored. But if there is an event of a fire and something burns, like anything that burns, if it's, even if it's wood or anything else, there is, you know, there are gases that are being released in an event of a fire. But normal operation, there are no emissions.
Do you have any monitoring devices so that you can see if you have particles of combustion before they actually combust?
Yeah, so inside every enclosure, you have heat detection, smoke detection, and CO detection.
There's also, and I know Con Ed very well, they usually require gas detection, so if the battery is starting to off gas?
Yeah, so they are using CO as an indicator for off gassing. That's, that's what they usually have.
Is there ultimately a decommissioning plan that goes with this kind of a project? And over what timeframe?
Yeah, so a decommissioning plan is, again, something that we work with, with the supplier. They are required to take the batteries. That's, that's something that they provide.
I mean, is there a useful life, an estimated useful life, at the end of which you would execute a decommissioning plan?
So again, we're looking at 20 years. There is a, there is a very active secondary market for used batteries. It's not something that we've done before. We never sold batteries to secondary market, but it's, it's something that, again, it's something that is covered by our long-term service agreement with the supplier.
So I wanna make sure I'm understanding. So the state has a mandate to get to 60, 6,000?
6,000 megawatts by 2030.
This is 50 megawatts?
This is 50, yes.
Is there a possibility that this could be expanded to support more, or you can't, like, I don't know, could you rack these to make them taller, or?
So we have, we have applied for an interconnection for up to 205 megawatts at this location. The footprint that we have currently in the lease area can only support the size that we're showing on the screen, but we are working with the landlord to try to secure additional sites.
So you can't build up? You, it has to stay flat, like?
Not with this specific product. So these enclosures also come with safety systems that prevent the batteries from being stacked. So it's something that we're working with other suppliers to see if in the future we can do that, because that's gonna obviously be a great advantage, especially in like smaller footprints.
Okay. So is that what you mean when you're referring to this is phase one?
Yeah, exactly. So this is phase one. This is what we're, this is the procurement that we have with Central Hudson. But we are looking to see if we can expand beyond the 50 megawatts, because we have the larger interconnection from NISA.
If you expanded, would it be, right, I mean, are you still planning to use the same underground conduit that you already, you would have to put additional wires in?
It's, it's very early conversations that we are having with the landlord. It's probably not gonna be an adjacent site, and this is something that we're hoping to do, but it's, it's very early stages, so.
Are you planning to lease the property from the landlord, or are you gonna subdivide?
Yeah, we are, we're working on a long-term lease, yes.
Long-term lease, okay. And the, you're gonna be taking up some of the parking that's on the site right now. I don't know what that parking is used for out there. The landlord has a parking plan, so as part of your submission, if you haven't already talked about it with him, you'll need to show all of that parking and where that fits in the overall master parking plan for the site.
We, we have discussed that with the representative from I Park, and they do, you know, they have provided for us, and they indicated to us that with all the current uses there, there will, we're removing parking spaces, but there will still be, I know, parking there to serve in the requirements for all the used parking properties.
Okay.
But we understand what I'm demonstrating.
And you won't have to demo any of the, any of the existing buildings, or any, because there's one that's pretty close to it.
No, we're not touching any of, any of the adjacent buildings, just the parking lot area. So we'll probably just have to demo the paving for the most part.
And then what about noise?
Noise, you mean during construction? Noise, you mean during construction or operation?
During operation.
So there is noise associated with the, mostly with the inverters in the plant. We can provide you with the specific information about the noise levels. But it's something kind of similar to a large HVAC unit or, and that's, and that's mostly during the discharge period of the system. So the four hours of discharge where the inverters are mostly active.
Okay, and it looks like in order to put the conduit in that you need to put in, you're going to be hitting a wetland.
So we did provide with the wetland memo. We are, I think that's part of the reason why we're showing overhead lines. We need to be able to come out of the Shenandoah substation and get to the facility. There is a buffer zone, I believe, a wetland buffer zone that we are crossing.
So you're going to go underground until that point, until the buffer? Is that what the plan is?
We are proposing overhead lines. So we are not running adjacent to West Drive. We're crossing West, West Drive and then we're going a little bit more behind the, let me see if I have a visual of that. So this is the proposed, if you can see it on the screen, this is the proposed path. So we're not proposing to run adjacent to West Drive, but a little bit more west of that.
And what kind of height for those poles, do you know?
About 80 feet.
80?
Sorry, 70.
70 feet.
I'm sorry if you already mentioned this, but how many projects have you done so far?
So in Texas, we have five projects currently, total of about 500 megawatts. And in New York, we have two under construction, total of 10 megawatts, 40 megawatt-hours.
And the two in New York are located where?
One in Brooklyn and one in Queens, 1074 Grand Street in East Williamsburg and 57-77 Ross Street in Mesmet.
Got it. Thanks.
These are sites that are under construction or complete?
They're under construction and they are scheduled to come online in April, May of next year.
Could something like this also be put on the roof of like a, if it's a flat-top roof of a building? Or do they have to be at ground level?
Or heavy?
They don't have to be ground level necessarily. They're, for example, in some states, they're permitted to be installed in buildings. We do have one application for a building in Brooklyn that is a rooftop installation. It really, it's a, it's a site-specific consideration. So you have to have a building that is able to carry the load. Batteries are quite heavy. So they, normally, if we can install them on a ground mount type of installation, that's, that's, if we have the space, that's what we do.
Okay.
I know you have confidentiality with some of your clients. When it's time to have the fire advisory board review this, can you share the fire systems that are being installed in the Con Edison projects?
Yeah, we can, we can definitely do that. Happy to provide you with a sample of what we're going through with the fire department in New York. And also, we can provide you with the draft of the NFPA 855 that we have prepared.
The city's going to require more, because they have their own, their own fire code down there. So we definitely would like to take a look at it. This is, I would say, a fairly new occupancy in East Fishkill. We definitely like to see what some of these other projects are doing from a life safety standpoint. There's a lot of power. Firemen would need to be trained to work in this environment. Are you going to have a control room on site? You did control room?
Normally, there is a control panel at the entry to the site to kind of allow control from a distance. But also, the facility can be monitored remotely. So you can, you can access the system from any authorized device to see what's going on inside.
Are the facilities in New York City located next to the substations?
No, so in New York City, these are non-transmission level projects. These are distribution level projects. They're connected to Con Edison feeders that are, that Con Edison identified as needing additional capacity.
So are the wires?
They're not next to a substation.
Are the wires overhead or underground in the city?
It depends on the Con Edison territory. So in some cases, it's underground and in some cases, it's overhead. It's not, it's not, it's a case side by side.
So in this case, it has to be overhead?
It, it's, again, the, the reason for going overhead is the access to the Shenandoah substation. That's what we identified is going to be the least. To minimize the disturbance, I think this is what we think is the most efficient way to go about it and...
Because it looks like you could go underground until you get to the area where it's wet and then go over.
There are other items underground that we need to consider. There are some monitoring wells. There is a water easement, a sewer easement. So where you're crossing West Drive, this is the most challenging area to go underground. And then when you get to the substation area, you have the wetland.
So you said this would be...
And we can provide additional renderings if, if that's going to be helpful. I know that we only have three images, but if you think that's going to be helpful, we can, we can definitely do that to show a little bit more detail on how it's going to look like.
Do these look like standard power lines? Are they high-tension line? Like, what, what do they look like?
These are high-tension lines. I don't have a visual of how they look like, but we can definitely share that with you.
Yeah, one of the renditions showed above the tree line.
Yeah, we have like the rendering, I think, it's, I don't know if it's...
So they, they are, they are high-tension, but they, they don't look like what's coming to and from the Shenandoah station. They're not like...
Yeah, it's not like the, it's not like the 115 lines. These are still high-tension, but not, they're not the same as the ones that are running west to the site.
You showed a photo or a riser diagram. They're going to be above the tree line?
We, I, I don't have the tree survey in front of me, but I think there are...
Those poles are about 70 feet high. Based on my survey, it may be taller than some other trees.
Yeah, thank you.
So you said this would be monitored remotely. Are there any jobs that would be on the site after the construction?
Not on site. It's, again, mostly monitor remotely. There are required maintenance cycles. So we're going to have people coming in on a monthly, quarterly, annually basis to do required maintenance on the system.
Right, yeah, no, I was just trying to figure the impact on traffic. It doesn't seem, seem like there's going to be a lot.
No.
Other questions and comments from board members or town staff? Any questions for us?
I would just, I understand the board has been through this special economic development. So I was just wondering what our next step would be. One, commencing the seeker process. Does the planning board usually take lead agency or is it the, is it the town board and, you know, what our next steps would be and how you see us proceeding through the...
Well, I think lead agency, I think it could be either, or it depends on the project. I think for this, probably the next step is, I know you heard a bunch of questions today and maybe some follow-ups, so I would think you'd be back in the next month here. And you'll present and then at that point, we'll probably know which board will declare it's intended to be lead agency.
Okay. All right, so we will come back here again before we go to the town board.
Yes.
And we'll just coordinate with you as to submission of a response to some of the questions we heard and hopefully see you in January.
Excellent. Very good.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Happy holidays and see you in the new year.
And a happy holidays and happy new year to you as well.
And thank you for starting your meetings at 6 o'clock.
So is there any further business to come before the planning board? If not, I'll accept a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second. All in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, pass. And yes, happy holidays and happy new year to y'all. Thank you.